How are you? Good. It's good to see you. Quite sad? We're gonna wait a minute and then we're gonna go ahead. Give Jared one minute to get here, huh? Hopefully, we won't be too long.
Oh, Carolyn called me. Yeah, I hadn't heard anything about it. She thought maybe, maybe I got in the middle of it.
Okay, we're ready. I'd like to welcome you to our planning commission meeting this evening. This is planning commission meeting for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Like to, we're glad all of you are here with us. This meeting is being recorded. We're gonna begin this meet, this meeting this evening with an opening prayer by Commissioner Johnson, and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Marchbanks.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together as citizens of this great city. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to live and work here and to do business here. We're grateful for the friendships we have and the community at large. We ask that please bless us today that we can make wise decisions that will be in the best interest of all those involved. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
You mean that?
Would all rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna begin our meeting this evening with an audible roll call of commissioners. Sharon Call here. Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Jared Showers.
Here.
Rob Callis.
Here.
Stephen Johnson.
Here.
Scott Thompson.
Here.
And Karen Danielson.
Here.
Okay. And the next item on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. I've had a chance to review the minutes. I didn't see any changes or corrections.
They look good to me.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. The next item on our agenda, this would be a time for public comment. This would be for any items that are not already on the agenda for this evening. Is there anyone here for that purpose? Well, the city council are actually working with that. We may be involved at some point, but I know they do have plans and stages those are working through. Our planning director may be able to tell you just a little more on that.
Yeah, so the, our city engineering department is still working on that, but the plan is to hopefully put curb gutter and sidewalk on the south side of the road. They're possibly looking at some bulb outs, so that would be some landscape bulbs on the corners of, of a few of the intersections. And then, right before the temple opens, they will redo the asphalt on Center Street and make it so it's a new road. Yes.
And what are your names? Okay, we just like to get it for the.
Yep, it'll be. They're, they're kind of waiting for the trucks to, you know, all the heavy trucks to go finish up over there before they make any future improvements. But again, it's all depending on budget, but that, that's the plan right now, so.
Okay, I know they've got some stages they're working through on it, so. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead with our next item on the agenda. This is a, this is item number four. It's a conditional use permit. It's the market at Walker Farms, four eighty-four East Center Street. And our applicant's Mike Jorgensen, if you'd like to come up to the front. And our presenting staff is Mary Barnes.
Thank you, Commissioner Call. So, yes, this item is for a conditional use permit for the market at Walker Farms at four eighty-four East Center Street as a part of the overall Walker Farms property, which is outlined here. The actual market is that small star. So, the applicant is Mike Jorgensen. He's the owner of Walker Farms. That's Jill, I'm assuming, right? Okay, awesome. So, they're applying to have this market be a boutique. This is a picture of it. A boutique in the commercial farm zone. So, the market is within the original home on the property, which was built more than a century ago. The commercial farm zone was created in twenty seventeen with the purpose, I'll just stay on the aerial photo, with the purpose to encourage agriculture and associated commercial activities that are compatible with or promote agricultural uses within the city. As part of that, the, the commercial farm ordinance mentions here, you can see that a boutique is one of the allowable conditional uses on a commercial farm-zoned property. So, the Walker Farms, the Walker Farms project was built in twenty nineteen. Is that right? Okay. And it has been a successful alpaca, is that correct? Alpaca farm and wedding event venue since then. All, I attached the site plans and landscaping plans just for, well, we're not reviewing them, but for reference. So, here's that existing house. It's that boutique. And here's that parking lot. So, all site and landscaping and building standards are still, and here's that landscaping plan again. Here's that home are still in compliance with city code. And with the parking, based on the total square footage, the, I know this floor plan is, it's a little hard to, what's the word? It's, it's a little hard to decipher, but basically it is one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine square feet. And with the retail requirements for parking, which is one per two hundred, only seven parking spaces are required. So, in this little parking lot, there are ten spaces, and I believe one, one of those is an ADA.
Is now, yes.
Is now an ADA, which is great. So, that meets ADA requirements as well for parking. Customers, so. Yeah, sure. So, here's that, let me see if I can pull it up on a better map. But if you see that this small star, right next to it is that parking lot. And I'll try pull up a, maybe a better map that I can zoom in on. Here we are. Okay. So, here's that, that little parking lot. So, a condition of approval that was added to this staff report is that any overflow parking must use the main parking lot to the south. They can't use this, you know, residential neighborhood or park in front of neighbors' homes. So, and then customers can use, there's a walkway here to the market, or they could even use the sidewalk to, there's quite a few ways that customers can get from this main over here. We just, you know, while this is permitted in this zone, we want to make sure the surrounding neighborhood isn't quite affected. So, to explain the other two conditions of approval, let me pull them back up. So, the operating hours of the boutique must be from twelve to eight. So, currently, the boutique runs from twelve to five. We, we added three hours onto that so that there's an envelope that the Jorgensons can work in so they don't have to come back for conditional use permit, you know, amendment every time they want to move that back. Felt that eight was a good stop for that on this, you know, commercial farm property. And then the, with the building code requirement, that was, that's just to capture any, just to make sure the home is structurally sound for this type of use and to capture any other required ADA standards, which it sounds like you guys have come into compliance with just recently. So, that's great. Condition number four is that it's kind of this catch-all also that it will not cause a noise or traffic impact on the surrounding neighborhood. If special events are held, the applicant will have to apply for a special event permit specifically with this boutique. We know there's like wedding events that are always held. But with this boutique, if a special event is held, like vendors coming, something, a special event permit will have to be applied for with the, the police department. That's what that last condition kind of encompasses. And that will make sure that there's enough room for, you know, if you're doing in the parking lot, there's enough room for parking in the main parking lot. And, you know, customers aren't parking in the neighborhoods, basically. Any, any questions with that?
All right, just two questions I had as I looked at it. One, just wondering why, I mean, we moved it to eight, which I'm fine. That's not, any reason noon or same thing with, with a business maybe open at ten or something, not have any real impact? I just don't know if that's a necessary G twelve or if they'd like it.
Probably ten would be, yeah, I see it going earlier than going later.
That was my question on that. Was that, was that just current business hours? Or would we want to look at something like that? And then I think you explained.
The hours you can enjoy when you leave the malls.
The other thing I think you've explained, but just to me, the vagueness of not cause a, I understand a noise impact, but a traffic impact and how, as we do this, how that's going to be enforced? Or if, you know, if someone complains, how's that going to be interpreted? Those were my main questions as I looked at this. I, I agree with what it's trying to do. I just don't know if the wording is sufficient. I guess I just worry about the vagueness that, how, how is that going to be interpreted of both ways, but I know that's.
If I could speak to that, one of the, and I, we're embarrassed to admit this, this thing's been operating for two and a half years. We thought with the permit and license, we got a, we got a signed permit through the city and we just assumed we did and then got a phone call from, from, who was it? It was, no, that asked you about, I'm sorry, that I've seen about. Anyway, Adam, he says, I don't think we've got this thing licensed. So, Michael called me, he says, I don't think we have this. And I says, well, I think we do because it's been operating. I know we applied for a signed permit, and so we do kind of have a, there's not a lot of traffic. It's quite minimal.
It's not very busy.
It's not very busy.
And it's a small, very small.
It's just a small thing and so I. I, I've not been aware of any, anybody parking it. We, we had a, a special event, we did that one time where, you know, we had the parking lot full of junk and so people would have had to park in treasures, not junk. Had to park in the street or somewhere else they'd get in our parking lot.
But we were asking them to use the barn parking lot, but, yeah, I don't think.
Well, maybe if, if a sign to, you know, to mitigate that traffic impact, if a sign is put up when that special event happens, you must park over here. There's a little map or something. And then, just in general, there's always a sign saying, you know, customers must park in this parking lot. Please, please do not park, you know, in front of a residential house. I'm sure that's where most of that, that impact would happen is if customers are parking outside of someone's home.
And the two, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that wouldn't have to be a condition, would it? I mean, that's something that staff can take care of.
I think that traffic impact on the surrounded, surrounding neighborhood encompasses that pretty well and covers anything else that might come up as well.
Because the two lots to the west of that parking lot are ours. Those are properties are, the home and the vacant field are our properties.
What if we just put all the way around the perimeter, the two sides, you know, no Walker Farm event parking, use lots? Just something simple like that, you know, because then that would force everybody into the lot. I'm sure there's probably.
I think, I think right now, all you need is a sign that just says market parking right by that little parking lot.
Thank you.
Something like that, because we're not, we're not getting issues with parking for the, we're not getting complaints with, about the events or anything. But we did for the one special event. That was a one-time thing.
In the parking lot.
But, but I think for this application, all the residents would just like to see a little sign that just says, with an arrow that says market parking.
Yeah.
Okay, something like that.
And as big as that parking lot is for that size of business, seems to be ample, ample parking.
I guess my bigger concern was, is it vague enough that someone gets a burr under their saddle and can cause problems?
It is very.
That, that, you know, well, the traffic impact is they have two more cars coming up, up and down the road. Or, you know, I, I just worry that as we try to mitigate, that we need to be clear enough that we're actually mitigating the problem and not creating a future possible.
But if there's signage, and there's plenty of parking and there's signage that indicates where people need to park, to me, that, to me, that's pretty straightforward.
Maybe to avoid what Steve is saying, maybe we could alter that condition or something to say, you know, parking sign and then also encourage customers to park in the parking lot or the main, the, you know, the bigger parking lot.
I mean, I think item three addresses the parking.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Be the overflow parking. And I think from what you said, item four was more for special events. So, I don't know if you, if we want to put that in there or something, you know, like the traffic impact of special events or.
I know special events are a whole different thing.
Okay.
It's a whole different application you get with the police department. I think if, if we want to modify number four, I think we just say that us, the directional sign, you know, sign for the market parking will be installed.
That's, I think that's best because, you know, really, because all you're saying there is will not cause noise or traffic impact. That's, I, I agree with Steve. That's super vague. That's super vague and that's just encouraging complaints in the future. And if that's not what we're concerned about, we're concerned about this parking, does it clarify to me?
And I don't know if they're really, I, it'd be a special event, I think would be a noise problem, right? I don't think any regular operations, I don't think there's a noise problem with the boutique.
Yeah, not with the market itself, but, you know, any noise problems would be with the, the venue.
Right, but this, this, this conditional use is just for the market, so.
Right.
I, I don't know. I mean, we're, that's not an issue we really have to address.
I don't think so either.
And for clarification, is it, is like, if we wanted to have a parking lot sale, is that a, I mean, that's.
That would be a special event permit with the police department.
You just have to fill it out like, I think, three days before, at the very least. They prefer at least five, I think.
And that wouldn't be in the, in the little house anyway, would it?
No, it'd just be, just, it's about hauling your merchandise outside and sticking it in a hot tent. It just sells better for some reason.
But then you would get a permit for that.
Could I get clarification, Mary? This use that they're using it for is permitted under the farm zone.
So, it's, it's conditional, so.
Where does it say conditional? I guess my question is, why do they need a conditional use permit?
So, if you see here, this is page two of the, you know, the Walker Farms staff report. I highlighted it as well. So, Linden City Code seventeen point fifty-one point twelve, permitted uses. And the permitted uses is single-family dwelling, accessory building, blah, blah, blah. And then it says number two, conditional uses, and one of those is a boutique. They also have like vet clinic and restaurant and all that kind of stuff. So, while it is, it is permitted in a way, but we're permitted to put conditions on it in a planning commission meeting, so that's what we're doing today.
I don't have any other questions other than if you want to alter the hours. I don't know.
Probably ten to eight.
Ten to eight.
I mean, I don't know what hours we do, but that would certainly cover everything.
Okay, that sounds, if you guys are okay with that.
I'm good with that, and if, if we're ready, I'm, I, I'll make a motion. Just wanted to clarify the one, so number four, change, just strike that, but say, required installation of a directional sign for the parking lot. For the market parking lot, okay. Okay.
Okay, are you ready, Steve?
I'm ready.
Commissioners, sorry, real quick, did you want to ask if there's any public comment on this? Are you good to just?
Sure, right. Are there, are there residents here that would like to make input on this? This isn't, I didn't think to do that. This isn't, isn't a public hearing, but it, we do always welcome comments from the public. Anyone here for that purpose? Okay, go ahead.
We actually live pretty much across the street from that, and there's not been any traffic issues thus far. I'm worried about the schools, and I mean, that's a nightmare this week. As far as the marketplace, even the event center, there's not been any issues as far as we're concerned. I don't know if you want to know where we're at, but.
You need to play music at night. You sit on the driveway and listen to it.
Well, that little market is really attractive, too.
It is.
The, the way you put it together. It, it's much nicer than the, than that little house that was falling down at one point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, come, Phil says, he's not a fan of old buildings. He said, you just need to bulldoze that and rebuild it. He teased me all the time we were building it. See, told you, told you.
Yeah. As you say, I'm grateful they rebuilt it. That's my, my great-grandfather's house, so.
Who's your great-grandfather?
The Walkers.
Okay.
Leonard Niedeth. So, so, yeah, those are, but that's beyond the point. I'm grateful it's rebuilt, but. So, I move to approve the applicant's request for conditional use permit to use a small home located, located at four eighty-four East Center Street as a boutique in connection with the commercial farm use with the following conditions. The operating hours of the boutique must be from ten AM to eight PM. Any outstanding building code requirements will be addressed with the Linden City Building Official and building permits obtained. Overflow parking for the boutique must be contained within the main southern parking lot. A directional sign will be placed to direct boutique parking to the small parking lot and all other items of the staff report.
I second that motion.
One comment on that motion.
The spelling error.
Well, you said the hours must be. I think we should say the hours can be any.
Or should be, or can be.
Between those.
Yeah, between those.
If they want to open two hours, they can open two hours.
I'll correct that. I'll amend my motion to say can be between ten AM and eight PM versus must be.
Okay.
And I'll second that amended motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And I do need to come shopping.
I'm going to say that little girl's not from Linden. Far southern.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and so we do need a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. And this is item number five. It's an ordinance amendment for water rise, water-wise landscape and design. And we reviewed this several weeks ago and, and will review it again. And I, our applicant is Linden City and our presenting staff is Michael Florence. And I understand we have guests here from Central Utah Water District.
We, we've invited Rick Malloy at your request from our last meeting, and Rick has a presentation that he'll go through with you, and then we'll discuss the ordinance further.
Okay. And, and who's with you?
Savannah Peterson. I'm another employee from Central Utah Water.
Great, it's really nice to have both of you here. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, thank you. And I understand there's a lot of questions, and so I will probably kind of zip through some of this presentation. I want to focus on addressing any concerns or questions that you, that you have, but wanted to hopefully make a few clarifications and just make sure that, that you understand some of the programs and some of the, the work that we've done with Linden City. Okay, so real, real quick to start out, I just want there to be some clarification about the programs that Central Utah Water Conservancy District offers. Starting with, we do have programs for your residents that are not contingent upon any adoption of ordinances. These are programs that are funded and are administered through Central Utah Water, but are also funded through the State Division of Water Resources. And that's a, the smart controller program and a toilet rebate. These are available to all residents throughout the entire state of Utah. So, there's no exclusions and there's no requirements for that. Do you have a clicker or just, I guess I can just tell you? Next slide. We did last, or in twenty twenty-one, the very end of twenty twenty-one, start some new programs. Flip Your Strip, Local Scape Rewards. These are essentially turf replacement programs paying residents who are interested in changing out their landscapes for, for turf. Next slide. So, historically, there's been several applicants within Linden City. We've paid out roughly six thousand dollars in projects within Linden City. And in, there's still some projects that are in progress, roughly about twelve thousand dollars. Those in-progress projects will still continue. Those aren't in jeopardy. We're not going to say these are not allowed anymore. But you can see there's a typical home, and that's kind of what the project or the end result would look like. And I think this is a home in Linden City.
This is actually a home in Orem, but we've had similar projects in Linden City.
Next slide. Here's some, just some up clo, up close pictures for some park strips that have been converted from lawn to something that's water-efficient, water-wise. So, these are attractive landscapes. Next slide. Here's some local scapes projects that we've seen. Again, it's kind of reducing the overall footprint of lawn, but these still include lawn. Next slide. You can see, again, it's adding function to the landscape. This is our principle behind the local scapes program is putting function over just having a general turf across the entire landscape. So, in, in the picture on the right, this is a really good example where previous to this, the place structure was just. the play structure was just sitting in the middle of the lawn. They reduced the lawn area, saving water, but also improving the functionality, they don't have to mow around it or, or irrigate through that play structure. And so, uh, these are air, prime examples for where they improve the functionality, they were able to get paid through the program and reduce water use, next slide. Here's another one, front yard, still some functional lawn, very attractive, um, next slide. We also offer a landscape leadership grant, this is for commercial properties. You can see here is a gas station. We worked really closely with Linden City and the Holiday Oil that came out a couple, probably what, a year ago? That was completed.
Jayden Roden, Seven Out of North.
Yep, and so we, they were one of our applicants for the landscape leadership grants, so we provided some funding. So this, this program's for new construction as well as any rehabilitated construction for commercial, multifamily, um, industrial, institutional, schools, things like that, next slide. Uh, we also have a commercial smart controller rebate, we've worked really closely with Linden City on updating and providing funding for smart irrigation controllers to all of the city parks. This has been a huge benefit, they're still so new, so we don't have a lot of data for savings, but you can see, um, that, for example, at the University of Utah, they saved over three hundred acre feet of water, roughly a sixteen percent savings. My gut would tell me that Linden City will fall well within that standard of about fifteen percent savings, which is great for, for the city, next slide. We also have our water efficiency program. This is important to Linden City because through this program, we are, we have just, um, well, tomorrow we will be taking a grant to our board for the Provo River Aqueduct Connection, which the district is providing four hundred thousand dollars in grant funding to, um, to create, or to help, uh, install or construct that connection for the city improving irrigation water to Linden City residents and remove some of the challenges with the North Union and Provo Bench Canals. So, um, the Linden City and Central Utah Water have a long history of working together, and, um, the district providing funding for conservation projects, next slide. So with, with all that, we have some new programs that are coming now, they actually will launch May first, so next Monday. The state, um, was appropriated some additional funds, five million one-time funding and three million ongoing funding annually for turf removal programs. With that, there's some stipulations that we have had to adjust to, and so we'll go into that, next slide. So that's where the water efficiency standards come in. There's a, several reasons why Central Utah Water is focused so heavily on these water efficiency standards. One of the reasons is you can see the water supply graph for Utah Lake Basin. Now, not every city is in water crisis, but there are municipalities within Utah County. Not suggesting that this is the situation for Linden City, but if we were to compile all of the water within Utah County, within Utah Lake Basin, uh, we would run out of water at current growth rates and current water use rates somewhere in the next ten to fifteen years. And that's pretty serious when, um, you know, we're already struggling to find locations for our children and our grandchildren to live within our county, next slide. Well, let me go back, so a couple other reasons why we're focusing on this. One, it costs about fifteen hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars for a new home to be built with a water-efficient landscape. It costs about ten times that amount for a homeowner to replace their turf with a water-efficient landscape. And so for us, we are a lot more interested in incentivizing and looking at how we grow and develop from a more sustainable standpoint than looking at how we can incentivize it down the road. We have had applicants where lawn is installed, and within six months, we pay that homeowner to remove that same lawn, and we'd rather see it go in right in the first place. We do offer also incentives to home builders, Ivory Homes is one of the largest participants of that program, where we provide incentives to offset that cost difference, so it's not, uh, we're not passing that cost of that water-efficient landscape onto the homeowner. So that's something that the district is, is funding. The other thing, um, we provide Colorado River water to the Wasatch Front, many people don't know that, and the Colorado River is in jeopardy, uh, and we have committed, uh, as a district, to a thirty percent reduction in turf throughout our service area in order to maintain access to the Colorado River. We're the most junior partner in the state of Utah, and that water is, uh, would be first on the chopping block were there to be any type of curtailment within the state of Utah, next slide. So the water efficiency standards.
Excuse me?
Yes.
When you say we're the most junior, are you saying the Conservation District or Linden?
The Conservation District, so the water that we provide, and that doesn't, isn't just provided to one municipality, it's provided throughout our service area.
So the, the Conservancy District that we're in is junior in that line of water taking from the Colorado?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, and I'm sure you've seen a lot of these and had discussions on the water efficiency standards, but I just want to run through them real quickly. This would apply to new construction only, we're not forcing homeowners to remove any of their turf. That's not, uh, part of this program, next slide.
So basically it says all new landscaping, construction installed by homeowners, so like right now, if somebody's redoing their yard or something like that?
It just applies to new construction, new construction. So if you're redoing your landscape, there's no permit required, uh, you don't have to pull a permit with the city to change any of your landscaping, but with a new home construction, sometime, we say homeowner because there's a lot of times where the new home is being constructed, but the developer doesn't install any landscaping, it's on the homeowner to install that landscaping, but that's part of a new home, and there is, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's still requirements by the city that those homes have a landscaped front yard, right?
No.
No, there's not.
Oh, oh, there's not?
Our, our current ordinance, so in Linden, we don't have landscape ordinances for.
Okay, for residential.
For residential. With our, so we've made some changes since I last sent the ordinance to you. One, one of those changes was, we got a lot of pushback, especially from Ivory Homes, about requiring the, um, the con, or the developer to submit a landscape plan and install the landscaping. So we put that the property owner's responsible for the landscaping to be installed.
Okay. Uh, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, like, for example, I have a very large property that, that's been undeveloped, and now it's going to be developed, and soon it's going to be landscaped.
Sure.
So this doesn't apply, this does not apply.
No, only to new construction, new residential and commercial construction.
Well, where is it in, because I read through this, and it was talking about if you're doing a fifty percent?
We, we did that for a commercial, so that, so if you, so if you're, th- this isn't, this wasn't a Central Utah requirement. We, I, I put this in for your consideration that, so if a property's being, um, redeveloped, and they're pulling out more than fifty percent of their landscaping, then to come into compliance with this ordinance if you're already pulling out a lot of your landscaping.
But that's only for commercial?
That's only for commercial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next slide. So, uh, real quick, we have some requirements on turf. We don't want to see turf irrigated or planted on slopes greater than twenty-five percent, and we don't want to see turf in areas less than eight feet wide. And in addition to that, uh, we have a requirement for thirty-five percent, next slide, or a max of thirty-five percent. We do have some considerations for small lots, um, that would allow for alterations within that, and, and these are open for adjustment as well, next slide. Um, just real quick, I wanted to show you what a lot or a plan might look like with thirty-five percent. There's a lot of confusion about, um, what thirty-five percent turf looks like, and that's thirty-five percent in the front and side yards. And so this is a prime example of a home that has thirty-five percent.
It actually has thirty-four percent.
Thirty-four percent, uh, turf in, and that's in, um, in that first, or in both of those lots there that you can see on that. And then again, we're not requiring anything in the backyard, that's up to the homeowner, they can have as much turf as they, as they want, uh, but what we've seen is that most homeowners carry the aesthetic from the front yard to the backyard. Do you have anything to add?
Just that a lot of the water waste we see in a landscape is found in the park strip, and so when you limit the amount of turf, people put it in a usable space rather than putting all of their grass into the park strip, so that saves a lot of water.
So that question came up last time, whether it would be possible for that thirty-five percent, if the majority of their, um, you know, if their big yard, their front yard is very bi, you know, quite big, but their backyard is very shallow, would it be possible to shift that thirty-five percent to a different area of the yard?
So the, the thirty-five percent applies to the front and side yard, but just know that the larger that area is, the more thirty-five percent becomes. And so you can see here that these two lots, they have, um, these are thirty-five percent, but, uh, we have some examples of like corner lots where it's much larger, and they end up having a much larger turf space in those areas.
But the question I think is, could we do thirty-five percent in the rear and have more in the front?
That, that's the question.
Unfortunately, we cannot, um, and that is because of state requirements. So the State Division of Water Resources, in order for them to faci, well, we use their funding for these programs, and in order for that funding to be utilized, they put two requirements. The two requirements are thirty-five percent in front and side yards, and no lawn in areas less than eight feet wide or park strips. So that's what the state has put a box around it, so we're pretty flexible in some of these other areas because we want an ordinance that makes sense for Linden City. But for those two things, we have no wiggle room because of state statute.
And, and what's the definition, I guess is it for front and side yard, is it to the back? Just draw a line on the back of your house?
And, and that's where there is a little bit of, um, because the state did not define that, so that would be up for you to define in your ordinance. So a lot of times people, well, other cities usually have a definition for what front and side yard is, and it usually is in a conju, so for Linden City, this doesn't apply because you don't have existing landscape ordinances, but a lot of cities will have requirements that say, um, you know, it's either the front of the house or the rear of the house, or wherever the fence is. So if you have a privacy fence, everything in front of the privacy fence has to be landscaped. So that's what that would apply to, but there is a bit of wiggle room for how that's written into your ordinance.
Yeah, because that's, I mean, there's a lot of places that will have a wide side yard, but as soon as they put a fence up, it becomes their backyard.
Right, so you could, in your ordinance, you could say side yard is everything to the rear of the, the structure or something like that, and that, again, what the state says is front and side yard, but they don't have any other language outside of front and side yard, so they don't specify what side yard is.
We already have those defined in our zoning code, and so we'll just go by what, what's currently defined.
And what is our definition, do you know?
Why don't we pull it up after the presentation, because I don't want to minimize this one.
Okay, next slide, we can come back to this if we need to. And then in commercial, in industrial, institutional, and multifamily, we have a turf percentage of twenty percent, and that's outside of active recreation areas. Active recreation areas is something that could be defined by a city, but typically that means if you have a multifamily housing unit and there's an open green space in the middle, that's not counted as part of that twenty percent. If you have a park, not counted as part of that twenty percent. If a, a school has play fields, that's again, not counted, so, next slide. Um, we do have irrigation requirements and recommendations, we want to see all of the turf irrigated with overhead irrigation and separated from areas outside of turf. So everything that's not turf would be irrigated with a drip system, next slide. And then we have a, a recommendation for smart irrigation controllers, and we can also work with developers in the city to make sure that these are, um, uh, that there's funding made available for these as well, next slide. Uh, we do have a requirement for mulch, uh, the best weed defense and the best protection against blight and other issues, uh, outside of lawn areas is to have three to four inches of mulch. What that mulch is and the types of materials that are used, um, would be something that I would recommend including in an ordinance, but we don't have any specifications for that, next slide. Um, plant material, we recommend fifty percent plant coverage. One of the biggest concerns that we have, or that we hear from cities is heat or heat island, or, um, you know, something that we hear a lot is zero scape, where there's no landscape. We don't want to see, um, landscapes void of vegetation, we don't want to see, uh, all the trees removed. So we want to see ordinances that have and require, uh, vegetative coverage. Um, and so we recommend fifty percent, um, vegetative coverage, and that can include lawn, but in areas where there's not lawn, we still want to see vegetative coverage. And again, for our programs, our turf removal programs, we actually require vegetative coverage to be put back in in those areas where lawn is removed, uh, in order to qualify for an incentive. If they don't put vegetation back in, they don't get funding from, from the district, so, next slide. Um, we do re, uh, recommend an indoor fixture requirement, uh, next slide. And, uh, again, this is for new landscapes, this is a recommendation, uh, or we would recommend doing it for rehabilitated, but that's not, that's not necessary. And that, that's all I have for the presentation, what, you can go to the next slide, what questions do you have?
I have a couple. Do you have any statistics as to what percentage of a resident's water consumption is for their landscaping?
Yes, uh, so across the Wasatch Front, um, residential irrigation or residential landscaping is forty-four percent of our water use.
Not yours, I'm talking about that family's use. So if, if a home is there, what percentage of their water that they use is for their landscaping?
Yep, it's usually somewhere between sixty and eighty percent of their, their water consumption.
And then, I've heard differing percentages, but what percentage of the water used in our state is for residential?
So that number is always changing because we're growing faster and our, and you're talking about the comparison to agriculture, I'm assuming. So that number is changing really quickly, but we break it down into what we call M and I, our municipal and industrial use, and the municipal and industrial use is somewhere around twenty and twenty-five percent right now, and somewhere between seventy-five and eighty percent is for agriculture.
I've heard we're residential, somewhere around seven percent, is that?
That's not accurate, um, out of our municipal and industrial, uh, roughly sixty-five percent is residential. So our commercial and institutional and industrial use is a very small percentage of the water.
Somewhere around ten percent of the water consumption, the state is residential.
Yep, or higher.
And so, I'm playing the devil's advocate here.
Sure.
A bit, but just so I can get the facts in my mind. So we're spending a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of efforts to reduce ten or eleven percent of the water consumption for the state by getting people to cut back on their residential landscaping or change their residential landscaping. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other things going on that will help reduce the seventy percent?
Yes, and, and it is proportionate to the water use. So, uh, the legislature, uh, approved, um, over five hundred million dollars in the last two years for agriculture optimization. Uh, Central Utah Water does, um, work closely with our ag. Uh Central Utah Water does um work closely with our ag partners as well for reduction. And uh resiliency efforts, we contribute quite a bit of funding as well to those types of programs. It's it's a, it it's certainly uh a concern and an issue throughout the state of Utah. And we are not letting anyone off the hook for water use, so everybody is doing their part. The challenge is is that our municipal water um is prioritized over agriculture. So in the last couple of years with uh unprecedented drought, agriculture has cut in some areas up to eighty percent of their water use. And almost nobody was left out of being shorted their their irrigation use. And that was at the expense of of a lot of our lawns here, so you can imagine that they feel the impact first. And they would love to see uh you know, more action, everybody points kind of fingers at the other side. But we're, we are certainly uh doing everything we can to mitigate all water y- or to reduce all water waste.
Well, and and you know, agricultural water is used to produce a product, I mean, so you have to. Think that it's it's wise to use that and to, it produces goods and services for the for the state.
Even though they might have the uh the oldest priorities. For water, you take their water first?
So the.
And if if I got a, I got a large farm in in Holden, Utah, that's got a priority that goes back to land patent.
So.
I mean, how does that work taking my water?
It, a lot of it has to do with um and I I apologize, that I'm not the expert on this, but I can tell you that. A lot of times it comes down to the available water within a system. So if there just isn't, like in situations where there's drought, if there just isn't. A reservoir to feed that or the reservoir runs dry, the, you know, they're out of, they're out of water, so that certainly happens. But in the state, the state has developed statutory. Uh hierarchy for water use and residential and municipal water use is at the top.
It trumps ag.
Yep, so unfortunately, that's just what the state has identified as saying, yep, we will make sure that we have water for drinking. And flushing the toilet before, you know, as as the highest priority and so. That, but that's not, you know, obviously, water rights comes into that and one of the things that. Central Utah Water is working on is is more of a uh a compensated approach or an approach where we say. If that happens, if there's reductions, w- we're not just going to say, sorry, you don't get your water, we're saying, no, we're compensating you for that. That lost water and any of that lost production.
One more question or comment that I had, and this is just my. My own feeling is, I think when we first heard this, we, you know, kinda took a step back and said, you know, it just seems like. We're all trying so hard to do what's right and I think. As a city, we've done really, really well, from what I've heard and from a state, I think we've done fairly well. But at the same time, it just seems like we're having a gun put to our head and people don't respond well to that. And even the wording in this is, and and in your comments, it's, well, you don't get this if you don't do that and. Uh it's it's really hard and and you think, gosh, we're going through all this, we're losing money, we're. We're being forced to do this, we're getting ready, we know metering's coming, we know this is coming and. And all to save a little teeny bit of our residential. Um. That's just my feeling, it's it just seems like. Government is always forcing us, you know.
This is, this is just a requirement in order for the participation in the programs and future funding. If the city doesn't wanna do it, no, there's no other.
Well, that's the same thing. You either do it or you don't get the money.
And the city needs the money.
So.
Yeah.
You know, and one lo- last comment is that, you know, I'm I'm sure there's been a lot of studies, a lot of, you know, what you've done, it all looks really good and you know, it's good, but. There is one thing is that all your photos showed everything in beautiful shape. You you put uh rock mulch and and a lot of things and weeds grow in that stuff and. You have to expect that not every resident's gonna take care of it. So it's not gonna look as well maintained as we see in the photos.
That's been my question too, cause I mean, where I live, I know there's some people that have attempted it, but I think if they saw some. Photos for some inspiration, maybe it would help them, you know, do something different, but I also wonder. What's the expense difference for people putting this in as opposed to lawn, you know, cause when you build a new home, it's. It's a little shocking when they, you go to put in the yard, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's expensive.
So those are are wonderful questions, I I wanna start off by saying that we um we provide. Forty to fifty classes a year, um we just ran some numbers and since we started teaching landscape classes, we've taught. Over twenty thousand uh individuals and um it's all centered around how to maintain a a water efficient landscape. Because it's a very big adjustment to go from mowing a lawn and taking care of of a landscape that's not just lawn. Weeding and preventative maintenance and and taking care of plants that um are different, have different needs. Um the cost difference is about fifteen hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars for new construction. Um we have worked with, what's that?
Fifteen hundred more for, is it, it, yeah, and that's probably not based on a half acre lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's probably a much smaller lot than we have here.
A m- a normal sized lot.
But that's based on the development, uh because we've been working with Ivory Homes, they've put in a lot, actually. Um quite a few homes in Linden City through the Ivory Development. Have participated in the funding program where we provide funding to Ivory Homes to offset that cost difference. And that's where we get those numbers from, is from Ivory Homes and so um it is smaller lots, it's gonna be a lot more expensive. There is a lot of variability in that, the more hardscape, uh the more rock, the fancier the plants, the larger the trees. That expense does change, but it's much cheaper to do it then than it is to do it down the road and replace it.
What, for example, for flip your, flip the strip, what, you know? How mu- are you gonna give them, say hypothetically, ten percent of what it's gonna cost them to flip the strip or what, how's that?
It's, it's really tough to determine, we pay, or we're changing our funding, so we're increasing it to about two dollars per square foot. For uh like a park strip project, but there are people who do it themselves, you know, they. They are able to source the mulch and they're able to uh, you know, to do it very in- inexpensively. Um if you hire a contractor to do it, it's gonna be a lot more expensive, you're probably gonna pay. Upwards of ten dollars a square foot for that change, did you have something?
Just the exact same thing, we've, we had that comment from a lot of participants last year and so. We've discussed it as a group of districts and up that.
So it's just a flat, two dollars per square foot of of gra- of existing grass?
Yep, for small projects, for large projects, so if somebody wants to do their entire landscape, their entire front yard or their entire backyard. Will pay three dollars per square foot, cause we'd rather have them do more um and do, and get it all done, so.
And of course, we're, you know, in Linden, we don't, as a percentage, we don't have very many strips. We don't.
Some of my concerns on it is um where Linden does not. Um have residential landscaping requirements. And so I can see unless an HOA, unless a development is part of an HOA. Um and the HOA enforces that upkeep and that landscaping, I can see there's some real problems and. Even the, you know, it's talking about three or four inches of mulch and then it it says that you can't put any kind of. Um you know, prohibitive barrier underneath that. So to me, that that just kinda sets things up as.
Just as a clarification, so um the only things required for participation in the programs are the four points related to lawn. So the no lawn in areas less than eight feet wide, maximum of thirty-five percent in front and side yards.
Okay.
No er uh lawns on slopes greater than twenty-five percent and then in commercial, it'd be twenty percent maximum. Those are the only things required for the city to install, so we have those recommendations about plant coverage and. Um you know, the indoor fixtures, recommendations about mulch, but those are not required for the city to put into the.
Where does that thirty-five percent come from, is that a state or your?
That's the state.
Okay, I just saw this whole list of things in our, you know, in our ordinance and talking about everything from. Um the exact type of uh sprinkling systems and, you know, turn off valves and. Um you know, drip systems, very specific on those and, you know, it. I mean, a lot of people do put in their own landscaping and when I look at that, I'm just going. How would someone without a lot of knowledge or without using a landscape architect or a. Um someone that is putting in their yard for them, I don't know how they would have the knowledge to actually put in. You know, all the things the ordinance is requiring, so I don't know, might, maybe you can.
Videos or classes, okay.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
We do have a lot of videos and classes, but one thing that I'll make a a note on is that um. Almost every city in Salt Lake County has adopted these ordinances. Um my assumption would be probably by the end of this year, half or more of Utah County will have adopted these standards.
Mm-hmm.
The installation of these landscapes will not be a foreign topic to any uh irrigation, landscape contractor. And so this is something that they're very familiar with, um we do a lot of education for contractors. Um so that's something that's completely separate of this discussion, but we do provide a lot of education for them. Another thing that I'll just mention really briefly is I've uh talked with Adam a little bit and. Uh we do have some funding available to for um for inspector. Uh staff, because we know that this is gonna be an added uh task for them and an added expense and so. We do, I told Adam that we have some funding available, uh if if that's something that he were to request. Uh and this was something that the city were to adopt, so. We we wanna make sure that we're providing uh enough benefits to offset any of the roadblocks to. Uh to uh putting these in place.
Well, that was one of my other questions is it, I know that for any new resident, residents, they do have to submit their landscaping plan as far as their. Um you know, just like their building plan for this type of thing. That does seem like that puts a a big load on on city staff as far as making sure all. The things that are listed in this ordinance are uh complied with. And then also where people don't have to put in their yard, I mean, they can wait five years in Linden to put it in. As far as following up on that and making sure that's put in according to ordinance. Those are just some of my questions.
Well, people that do that run the risk of these kind of funds running out, not being available to do that or. Or the code I see changing again, probably in the next five years, but.
And and that's one of my questions with with city staff, I mean. Are they gonna monitor that for that many years to see when they get around to putting in their landscaping and if it's. Compliant with ord- the ordinance?
Right, and I guess, oh, the sub-question of that is when would the landscape plan be required to be submitted? You know, I mean, cause I can tell you, when we built our house, I had no clue what I wanted to do with my yard and it was probably three or four years before I could afford to put. The grass in that we did, yeah.
And that's what I'm wondering about is situations like that and where people are doing a do it yourself type project, even though. Uh landscaping specialists would certainly have knowledge of that, if someone's doing it themselves, then how would city monitor that that's done correctly?
Well, I mean, right now, you're not required to put a lawn in, a yard in.
Right.
Right.
And so um the the city, we will give notice to the property owner, so. Once we issue the certificate of occupancy, we'll give them a notice that they, here's our, here's our requirements. Uh we're also going to put together a landscape handbook with lots of resources, um but it'll just, we'll just have to follow up with them.
That's what I wondered is, that'll just have to be monitored, right?
Yep.
You said you, you took it out, but will they have to submit a plan or is there no? When they get ready to do their landscape?
Okay.
Will they have to submit the plan when they do the house, house plan and they just not do it for the next five years?
It's not, it's, it's not part of the building permit, I I.
Okay, so it's separate?
It's separate, yes, um that was, that was a concern um when I reached out to Ivory Homes about ordinance, they were very concerned about. Um the city requiring the landscaping be installed before certificate of occupancy and they. They pointed to state law that said you can only hold up a certificate of occupancy for life, safety and welfare issues. Um and then they were concerned about a developer having to submit a a site plan or a landscape plan with with every building permit. And so the, if you look under the Waterwise Landscape Ordinance under uh title uh ten nine A, which is the municipal. Zoning requirements, land use requirements, it talks about property owner and so I switched that from developer to property owner.
And and I guess what, what level are these plans gonna have to be, I just worry about a cost to a resident, right? I mean, if it's already expensive, if you can't get the yard in, now you gotta go pay someone to do a plan.
I'll point you to the ordinance, it has the requirements here. So in number two, right here, the landscape plan shall include the following.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Sure.
The um and and we've been great partners with Ivory Homes, there's a reason why they do not want. The um the landscape, landscape to be completed for certificate of occupancy and that's because. We often finish homes in the middle of winter where we can't provide landscaping. But I will suggest that you put the developer on the hook for these landscapes. Um it's gonna be much more expensive for the homeowner to do these landscapes than it is for the developer and in every other city. It's a requirement for the developer to put in, I shouldn't say every other city, but the majority of the cities that I work with, it's a requirement that the developer. Install the landscape, uh in the past, they required bonds, the legislature has removed the ability for cities to bond. Uh because that's for health and safety only, but there's still avenues that uh municipalities can require. Uh developers to install landscapes for the homeowners.
Is that just the front yard or backyard?
It's usually just the front yard, um that's something, and you'll see in multifamily, it's different, you can require everything to be done. But in most cities that we work with, the cities will require the front and side yards to be um installed. Either before the certificate of occupancy in area, air, in months outside of winter months and then during winter months, they'll. Require some sort of grace period, six months or whatever.
Cheaper for the developer to put landscaping in than the homeowner?
It's economy is a scale and compa- usually uh home builders will, Ivory Homes has their own landscapers that they contract with. And those landscapers do thousands of homes every year, um they're going to get a much more competitive. Cost for that landscape than it would be.
Do it yourself or that wants to do his own.
I- if they do it themselves, they they can and that's certainly an option, um many homeowners will request that the home builder provide a credit. But don't be fooled, they're gonna pay the same price for that home whether the home. Uh whether the developer is installing that landscape or not.
Really?
Right.
So, so I just, I wanted to point you to the state code and this is why I went to property owner on this. Um if you look at number two there, it says municipality may not enact or enforce an ordinance resolution or policy that prohibits or has the effect of prohibiting. A property owner from incorporating water wise landscaping, so if someone wants to do water wise landscaping, they they can do it, we can't prohibit them. Uh number three, subject to subsection three B. Um subsection two does not prohibit a municipality from requiring a property owner to comply with a site plan review or other review process. Before installing water wise landscaping and so we can require a landscape plan. Um maintain plant material in a healthy condition, follow specific water wise landscaping. Uh maintain plant material in a healthy condition, follow specific waterwise landscaping design requirements adopted by the municipality. So in our ordinance, we said you need to do, still have seventy percent vegetation. And so that, that's why I went with property owner and instead of developer. Um just I I was following, you know, what the state laws said on that, so.
Okay. Anyone have other questions for our guests? We do have several here, um and yeah, go ahead. No, I just um yeah, you're welcome to sit down. We, we have several here from the public. Do you have questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone here? Oh, great. Well, you've learned a lot tonight anyway, haven't you?
Oh, yeah.
Always.
Okay, um let's go ahead and close the public hearing and then we can bring it back up to here for discussion or for questions.
To close the public hearing.
Okay, I I have a motion, do I have a second? Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. Okay, um and now we have an opportunity to discuss this among the commission? Or um I'm sure we can also ask our guest?
Mike, I'm looking at the code for the yeah, zone. I didn't see, where is it showing residential?
That's right.
The thirty-five percent requirement?
Well, it talks about regional commercial zones.
Oh, you gotta scroll down.
Way down.
Way down?
Yeah, way down.
The landscape ordinance itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's at the last couple pages.
Where is it?
So what I provided, 'cause we we mentioned.
Right down there, six?
Uh grass in, so those are all updating those ordinances to those different land use districts. They're all updating those to refer back to this waterwise landscape ordinance.
But this, now, this doesn't require residences to landscape still?
New residents, yes, thirty-five percent.
It does require them.
Not require them to.
It doesn't require them at the time?
It does, it it doesn't give a timeline, but it says that new residential has to have a max- or can can have a maximum thirty-five percent turf.
Could we consider putting a timeframe on that?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
I.
I would like.
I think that would be almost um, I think that would be a really wise thing to do because I think it's gonna be really difficult for the city to uh be checking on these residents all the time to see if they're putting in their plan and if they're doing it right and if they're following um all the regulations. I think that's gonna be really difficult if that's open-ended.
Yeah, and our hope is that we'll work with Ivory Homes and any other developer and and have them install the landscaping. You know, they are essentially the property owner while the home's being built. You know, we'll s- we'll still try to work with them on that and encourage them to put in the landscaping. But um but but yes, I I agree that it'll be a tracking um issue.
What is a reasonable time limit? One year following occupancy? What, 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 I mean, yeah, what, what, where do we, where do we put that number? I I like the fact that the number, I like the number should be there, right? Something should be there, but what is that number?
Well, I like one year and because of the seasons and because it gives a person the time to move in and decide what they want. Like you said, you didn't know what you wanted when you first moved in.
Of course, Linden's a different place than when I moved here, you know, when I built here. Because, you know.
Right.
The people, I, well, I would say just the cost of land and stuff, the people are moving can probably maybe afford more than. I mean, I, when I built my home, it was sweat equity to try to get in it. And we didn't have funds for landscaping and it was literally, I think, four or five years before we could.
Not everybody buys a home from a developer.
Yes, and you know, we built our home and 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 did that. So yeah, so I worry about a year that would've, that would've broke me at the time. I mean, it would've put me right under, the house put me under the starting.
But what's left in Linden is a bunch of half, you know, we're infilling half acre lots that are costing five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, you can't build a home in Linden that's not over a million dollars. So people coming into that, understanding, they know that I have to, I have to irrigate, I have to landscape within a year.
Yeah, it it's a very different situation than I.
You know.
And maybe you give.
Regulations are very different now, too.
Yeah.
And maybe you gave a year with, that staff could grant a six-month extension because of the seasons and, you know, things like that.
I think we need to be careful that it, we're not too strict on, for example, a plan. I don't think it has to be a design, architectural design plan. It can be a person come in and say, this is what I wanna do and draw it up.
For commercial, we usually like those, but.
Different for commercial.
But you know, yeah, for residential, it could be a, some circles on a paper and say, these are the plants I'm putting.
As long as it, it, I mean, this ordinance is very specific as far as.
Yeah, 'cause it says you have to measure the the square footage and, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that puts quite a bit of requirement on.
We do have to do that, though. I mean, we, staff has to be able to look at it and measure it. So you know, if they give us a scale, that that's easy to do, um.
Are there online design tools for them to do it online?
Sure. Yes, there are online design tools. We also offer design workshops. And then the other thing that I'll mention is that homeowners can apply for the programs too that we provide to Ivory Homes. That's something that any new uh home builder or homeowner with new landscape can apply to. But we do have resources, uh we do also have uh design resources as well within our office.
We just need to make them aware of it, right?
And and we can work with staff on kind of that packet of materials that would go out to a no, new homeowner that doesn't have a landscape. We can, so that we can provide information to them.
And so then that would be at no cost to the the owner, they can have those. So the there, then there's a a resource, that's good. I I just worry about burdening more and more.
And and Mike, is it not, I don't, I don't want to pu- put too much where they have to, they know, they come in here, we say thirty-five percent, and they have to go here for, have to go here for the rule, and they have to go somewhere else for the definition of sidewalk yard. Shouldn't we, in this document, put the definition of side yard rather, so the the homeowner can read it? It's there, rather than, oh, here, and I have to go, go somewhere else to find it?
We would put that in our, in our landscape manual that we hand them. We, you typically don't put the definitions in multiple locations. Uh they're already in title seventeen.
We will have a manual we can hand to new homeowners, yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
And if you can explain to me, Mike, again, if it's, if a yard's deeper than thirty, you you were explaining that last time.
And I modified that language uh this time. Um so I said, the typical front yard residential setback in Linden, setbacks in Linden are thirty feet. I can't, that's the same language as last time, but this is what I changed. If a property owner has a greater setback than thirty feet, such as a deep lot, uh you know, like a flag lot where they've got a lane and and a, and a lot, the homes in the back, the front yard landscape area shall be designated on the site plan and landscape, site and landscape plans to ensure that landscape requirements are met. So they'll work with city staff on their landscape plan and and put that together.
So when you say like the first thirty feet is the only thing that applies?
No, I didn't, I took that out.
Good, I guess that's my question is what does the state require on that?
They require the front yard.
And and so what's, for the state definition of front yard? My house to fit is all this, so I have a huge front yard.
There's no def- state definition of front yard.
And that's accurate, and that's um on purpose for this statute is that they didn't define it because it's gonna be different for every city. We had a lengthy discussion about it. Corner lots comes into that, 'cause you can fence out your corner and make it part of your backyard, does, you know what I mean? So yeah, we, we thought it would be prudent to let the city define what that is um to meet, to better meet what the aesthetic that the city would like.
That goes back to my question, what is Linden's definition of front and side yard?
Let me pull it up.
So when we say that, now it's thirty-five percent of a large front, you know, 'cause of, you know, uh my opinion, my personal opinion is homes that sit back from the lot, back, look more grand. But now you're saying, if you move, put it back there, it's just gotta put a bunch of gravel out there or mulch and stuff, rather than, you know, something else.
Yeah, and and what we've seen in terms of new development has been uh the smallest or the shortest frontage. I don't know if this is what Linden sees, but the shortest frontage possible to maximize the backyard. It's a little bit flipped in this, so that's why we focus on this area. It's the other thing, when we um, so we ran a lot of surveys and polls and we asked residents what they want. And it's part of valley visioning. Um most people want to have lawn in their backyard and they don't want people to tell them what to do in their backyard. And that's where they want their space. Front yards, people were less concerned about what happened in their front yard.
So here, here's your definitions of of yard. So we define front, rear, and side yards. So your front yards from your front property line to the front of your house. Your side yard is um those, basically the areas between the front yard and the back, and the rear yard.
So the front yard and the rear?
Or sorry, the front of the home and the back of the home.
Okay, so if you put a fence along the front of the home, then the side yard becomes your rear yard?
No, I think it's saying, it doesn't say anything about a fence, so. So basically, it's the, you could just draw lines from your.
The space between the front of your home and the back of your home is your side yard.
Yeah, it says, it means a space, I'll pull it up, see higher, means a space on the same lot with a building between the sideline of the, of the building and the side lot line, so from the home to the side property line, and extending from the front yard to the rear yard. So that's the, that's for, basically, from the front of the home to the back of the home.
Is side yard.
Is the side yard.
Yard.
Even if it's fenced or whatever, they have to, then that has to comply?
Yes.
Well, Karen, or Commissioner Danielson just brought up an interesting comment and she said in, in the Ivory Homes down where she is that um any homeowner that is doing their own landscape does have to submit that plan to the HOA to make sure it complies with the the waterwise landscaping.
Yeah, I think the front and back from what I, I could be wrong, but I know at least the front yard.
And and I think those um developments that are through an HOA, I I'm sure they're very aware and would follow these guidelines. It's those that are uh doing things by themselves and independently.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide them lots of resources.
Yeah, I'm I'm just wondering if we, if we have the flexibility to make our own definitions of front and side yard? And if we have corner, I mean, do we want to look at that as part of this process to try to minimize this impact somewhat on, I I don't know, I like.
These are very standard definitions you'll find in pretty much every, every community.
But didn't he say, but didn't he say that side yards aren't defined by the state?
Yeah.
In regards to this definition?
And and you're, you're correct, but I, in almost every city ordinance that I review, side yard usually is, is the same as reflective. So the, one thing that I'll, I'll probably recommend, and this is what I've worked with on other cities, is that there's a lot of fringe cases. And that's when you just authorize the uh whoever's reviewing those plans to allow for accommodations for things like side yards or with corner lots. You know, does that fall into the backyard? 'Cause there's some, there's some challenging information there, but you can define it. And I have seen it defined.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for our representative from central Utah? I hate to keep you here too long tonight.
He's enjoying the company.
I bet. Doesn't have anything else to do. Are there any other questions for him? And then we could continue our discussion among each other. Any other questions? Thank you so much for taking your time to be here.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate that.
I am available and happy to come back if there's additional questions, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Or it sounds like we still have a few um changes we'd like to make to the ordinance.
I I guess I don't know what those are then.
What are them?
Well, one that I wrote down is that um, well, he mentioned the developer being on hook for the, for the landscaping.
I I'm worried, I'm worried about doing that. I mean, the, the, some of the feedback I got from developers, I'm, I'm worried about us doing that. That's why I went with the language in the state code.
Okay.
That says property owner.
Okay.
I don't think that's fair, and not everybody buys their lot in their house from a developer.
That's right, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm with you.
And what about the time limit?
I do like the time limit, I'd like to see something put in there about that.
I, I like that too, so that you don't just have these yards strung out forever and you're trying to monitor those.
I mean, is that something you feel comfortable stating what you want and then just me writing that and taking to the council?
I think one year with the option for an extension.
A six-month extension?
Well, you know, yeah. And maybe even, we don't even specify the length of that extension, 'cause there might be some peculiar circumstances.
There might be financial, you know, hey, the family just.
But uh maybe they have to come back every three months or something, get an extension, I don't know. But that at least puts a precipitous on them to get their yard looking nice and and and.
I would like to ask Jared what your thoughts are on this. You've been really, really quiet on it all.
Well, personally, I'm okay that Linden City doesn't have a residential landscape requirement. I think enforcement goes a long way to make sure that people's yards, whatever that might be, weeds, whatever, that at least it's maintained, it's clean, there's not dilapidated fences, the weeds are not so high, there's not inoperable cars parked all over the place. I mean, I'm more about just enforcing sort of a cleanliness and aesthetics about it than saying, hey, you've gotta put in landscaping. So I'm not super excited about putting, instituting some sort of residential landscaping.
Well, isn't it just?
I know this is just new construction, but.
Is this lands, it's either landscaping or dirt, right?
It could be whatever, whatever somebody's situation is, they could have other things in their yard, I don't know.
But I don't know if we have that choice with this.
That's the, that's the other point.
That's why he's been quiet.
Yeah, I don't know if we have that choice.
This is gonna go.
I mean, he mentioned a number of four hundred thousand, I think, to do this project where you're linking the two canals together. Isn't that what the number was? I mean, that's a significant amount of money to say, no, we don't wanna participate in this.
Well, and that's only one of the, one of the many things that we need that funding for.
From other meetings, I've come to discover that we, I think, are getting quite a lot of money and benefit out of the district for our city. And so, you know, and he answered the question about the thirty-five percent. That's where we were a little bit upset, or at least I was a little bit.
How that you could transfer that?
The last meeting, but that's a state thing, that's not them, until we clarify that, but.
I have heartburn of thirty-five, it's not him, it's, but that's saying a third of your yard can only be grass, front yard can only be grass. So maybe I want more grass than that.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna cost me that much more in water.
Yeah, well, we were all upset about that, but that, we found out tonight, it's a state.
That's not anything they have control over.
The other thing, I guess, for me before.
You put the whole front yard in grass, a hundred percent, as long as it's artificial.
Yeah.
But they won't, but they won't give it.
You could have that grass longer for just a small fortune.
I, I, part of the ordinance too, it says what type of emitters and how to put it on valves and stuff, which they say is not required. I, like I said, maybe it's 'cause I've just done it all myself, I I have no idea that I could even pull that off.
And that, that was one of the things.
Well, it's, it's really going back to trying to educate in this ordinance as well. I mean, you're not gonna, in your, you know, landscaped area, you're, you're not going to probably be using pop-up sprinkler heads to irrigate your tree, you know, you're, you're gonna be putting more of a, or of a bubbler in or a drip irrigation or something like that.
But there's drip emitters or a bubbler shall be provided for each tree. Well, so now someone has to think, okay, if I'm gonna someday plant a tree here, somehow I gotta get a drip irrigation or a bubbler out to that tree or, I mean, there's just. or a bubbler out to that tree, or, I mean, there's just, I, I just think.
I guess that's why you're getting a landscape plan upfront.
Yeah.
I, I guess if this is gonna set, I'm just worried this is gonna set something that's gonna happen eventually. It's new construction now as we come, and, and, and maybe I'm struggling with that too much, but.
I could see, you know, without our, without a requirement to put it in within a time limit, five years from now, somebody finally gets around to putting it in, and they're just gonna, are they gonna know that they have to put it in? Or, and then are they just gonna put it in? And then now we have to have their city inspectors coming by going, hey, did you have, do you have a permit to do that? I mean, it's just, so we need that short timeframe or something.
To me, to be in compliance with what the requirements are, to be able to get the funding, um, this is, and, and this is apparently what other cities are also doing. Um, we probably need to be quite specific on what we're gonna require. And then actually though, that, that, I think that helps homeowners rather than, um, than it doesn't, because they know exactly what they need to do. And, and it sounds like Central Utah is, is very willing, and the, and the city will provide a handbook to help them to know how to, how to put those systems in if they're doing it themselves.
I think HOAs do a better job of enforcing the, the timelines or enforcing
Right.
certain landscape designs than the city does. I mean, they're not staffed to do it, the HOA, that's the management companies, or the neighbors complaining.
Right.
So, a- again, somebody who buys a half acre lot and they don't landscape in two years, I'm personally okay with that as long as it's, you know, there's certain things that we can do, like if they got construction equipment that's been sitting there, like didn't you have that on Locust Avenue for three years or whatever? I mean, we can enforce that, but.
The other side to that though is, what about that guy's neighbor? He's invested a lot of money in his home, and he's trying to make it look nice. He wants the value of his home, and his neighbor has decided not to put in landscaping, it's dirt, the wind's blowing it. He's got a tractor and a, and a, and a storage shipping bin out in his front yard. I think we need to help protect the neighbors and, and.
I do, I like that.
Now, I think ninety-five percent of the people who buy a home, build a home, will put their landscaping in in the first, first year.
Yes.
More, maybe ninety-six, seven percent. It's just that one or two that, uh, are fine with dirt, and that you just have to say, hey, come on.
I like your idea of an extension.
Yeah.
Or maybe s- specific circumstances.
You know, that, that was kind of the standard that I always used, and I, I, I put a couple of thousand building lots in in my lifetime, and, and I've always, I just always had, uh, CCNRs that dictated that within a year of occupancy, I just went, we just went, the, the front and side yards had to be in within that first year after occupancy. Is what we did to protect the value of the, everybody in the subdivision.
Would you say that though, with, okay, so front and side yards have to be in, but could you say, would you say area four to the fence? So, like, to me.
Whatever it is.
Somebody, somebody come, so, because if somebody put up a fence, they don't want to do their side yard.
Yeah.
Well, they might want to do an RV pad or something.
Yeah, right.
Right.
You know, it doesn't have to be landscape, it could be some structural.
Yeah, I, I suggested that a few years ago, and, and Mike wasn't here then, but they acted like, you know, that CCNRs, they, the city didn't care, which they don't need to care, because there's a committee set up to be the policing as part of the CCNRs.
But there's a reason.
Now's the time to put in this ordinance.
There's a reason homeowners associations or force people is to make it look nice. And so shouldn't the city kind of?
Some over by us that don't look very nice.
What they're assuming is that they, they put it in and they don't maintain it, then what leverage do you have?
Yeah, you don't have much.
I mean, you could add something in this ordinance that says, you know, for, for this landscape ordinance, the side yard shall, you know, shall go to where the fence is installed. You know, you could have something, you know, for, for this one, if that made you.
That's why I like having that in here. That won't affect them.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that's fine.
And then you put that one year with option for extension, who's that extension approved through?
It would be Community Development Department.
Okay.
Well, if we did, I mean, the, the city council is gonna review this also, and they're gonna make a lot of input on it besides what we've made. I, I think they're gonna take our suggestions and then probably build on those, or, or change those. So I, I think the biggest things that, at least I'm hearing, is the, the year for landscaping with the, with an extension for specific circumstances. And possibly the side yard to where the fence is.
Our definition.
Yeah, the side yard definition, um. I, is there anything else that we would want Mike to add to that before it goes to city council?
We're only saying for the, the front yard must be done within the year. We do, we don't, we're not gonna try to regulate how long it takes somebody to do the backyard.
No.
I think front and side.
And side yards to the fence.
That's, yeah, that's what, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
So it would be your front and side yard, if a fence is installed, then it would be up to where the fence.
Yeah, so if they put the fence right at the side, corner of the house, then the side yard wouldn't have to be done.
Right, right.
Okay, we'll let you work out that ruling, but I think you get what we.
So, yeah.
Intent.
Yeah.
You know, one other thing that, that I, I, it was mostly in commercial, and I'm okay with commercial, but when we start telling them, you have to plant a tree and it has to be every twenty-five feet or thirty feet or something, that kind of eliminates, um, variety. We're not doing that in the residential, are we?
Not in the residential, no, just commercial.
That's just commercial.
And that's, that's been in our commercial requirements for decades, I believe.
No, that's, that's just commercial.
So none of these trees?
I like the clustering idea.
Tree selection and mulch have anything to do with residential?
Ye- yes, but the, the tree selection is more just general guidelines, so, um.
Well, but there has to be a minimum two inch, and, I mean, there's just some stuff, I'm like, that, I, I, for residential, I don't, I, that should be in there.
Two inches what you buy at Home Depot.
That's an expensive tree.
No, you're two inch.
That's typically what you buy at, you know, for fifty bucks at Home Depot, that's your normal tree standard.
Not a two, uh, maybe a one and a half.
I think they're a two inch, I believe, when I bought them there, but maybe inch and three quarter, but I thought they were a two inch when I.
Most people around here were buying the pencil sized Quakies years ago.
Yeah, I believe, I believe they were, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, you know, or.
But you're, you're zoning, you're.
Dry root, or, you know, your fruit trees or whatever, they're not, I, 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 that's why I'm saying I'm worried about this applies to both residential and commercial. There's, I think we're being maybe a little restrictive on.
What's restrictive in that?
That they shall be a minimum of two inch, or there's.
Okay, we can take that out, that, that's your requirement already in your commercial zones.
And I'm fine with it being in commercial.
So let's add the word "commercial" then.
That's okay in commercial, that's okay.
Add the word "commercial."
Yeah, so.
So what, what else?
So you, these are, some of these are, you know, typical standards about, uh.
Where was it you saw, I didn't read where you said you couldn't use landscape fabric.
Well, it says it can't, it says, um, under mulch, but I think it says you can, non-porous, but most landscape fabric, fabric is porous.
It's considered porous, yeah.
I would, I would assume.
Okay.
Um.
So as long as it's non-porous, then, okay.
You can't put plastic underneath it.
I mean, it's porous, yeah, okay.
Can't put plastic, right.
Okay, anything else as far as direction to Mike?
I have a procedural question. Is it possible to vote present versus a yes or no on the planning commission?
I don't know.
Or abstain from voting?
I mean, you're, you're, part of your job on the commission is to vote, and so you can either say yes or no.
So I was just asking if it, I guess I'm, I'm in that middle ground.
You need to vote for it, or?
You feel this way because you're, you feel this way because we're being held hostage. We're being held hostage.
I'm feeling.
If you have hesitations on the ordinance, then you should vote no.
Okay.
Either one or the other, that, I, is that right, Mike?
That's right.
Well, so, I was just asking, because I just know in some other places I've heard that before.
It, it just seems like, um, to just not vote either way, it just seems like you need to take a stand on whether you agree with it or not.
Yeah, one suggestion I would make is maybe put another number in there and have, um, let's see. Residential, a little bit separate from commercial. Landscapes in commercial, industrial, institutional and public agency development. Landscape in new single family residential developments. Okay, I think we're okay.
And then they are, they are separate at the end as well.
Yeah.
You've got.
Can you see where that is?
Six and seven that they're separate as well.
Six is where it starts with new single family residential developments.
Yeah.
And then.
Where does the multifamily fit in there? Is that an, would you call that an institution, what would you call that? Not an institutional, but it's.
It's with re, it just, it says residential, let's, let's see, it says new single family residential developments, um.
Well, come, anything multifamily, they, they're part of the plan, is it?
Yeah, I probably need to add the word, either mul, probably multifamily here as well in six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or maybe we separate that from the single family, because we would require much more of a multifamily project than we would a single family resident, wouldn't we?
Well, if it was multifamily, they.
Well, most we can count as thirty-five percent.
Well, what I mean is, we wouldn't allow, uh, probably Linden, the, the two developments that are ongoing on, and we wouldn't allow them to landscape, have a, up to a year to landscape their unit that they sold, would we?
They need to put their landscaping in.
So I mean, they, they. Anything that's multifamily, one person can't say, I don't have the money to put it in, I do.
That's what I'm saying, we might want to separate multifamily and resi, and single families, and have a little stricter requirement of multifamily, is what I was saying.
As far as the timeline?
Mm-hmm.
Because the developer would be required to put that in.
The developer's required to do that.
That ought to be done at the time of, of occupancy permit, almost.
Do we require a timeline?
Really, Rob, because it, you might, the first pro, the first few units may be done a year and a half before the last few units. You wouldn't want to hold up occupancy permits as people are moving in, so, again, it almost needs to be tied to.
Doesn't, doesn't ivory landscape as they sell?
Um, I guess it depends on the season.
Yeah, totally.
Based on weather.
Yeah, totally based on the season.
But they do, yes.
Yeah.
Any other, any other direction you want to give Mike?
Just looking at this, I mean, I'm fine to bring it back, if you want, for a third time, we can.
You can make the, as far as my opinion, I think you can make those changes and, and, and then take it to city council, because they're gonna have additional changes.
Okay.
Uh, what do the rest of you feel?
I agree.
Well, I, I'm okay on the, you know, adopting, I, I just may not personally agree with maybe a timeline or something like that, but I'm okay forwarding this on to the city council, so would I buy, would I vote yay, or would I vote, right?
That, that's.
Or do I vote net?
That's my situation, right.
I think you need to work that out.
I, I, I'll.
Is that your bringing some station?
Yeah, I, I, I would say, for me, I know someone make a motion, I know where I'm gonna go, and then if it, something doesn't pass, then we can talk more.
So all we're doing is making a motion recommending to move it forward to city council.
Okay, just explain what your hesitation is. I know you don't like the.
I, I, I don't like all the, the, the timeline requirements, all the requirements. I, I don't like any of the requirements on residential, that's, that's just, doesn't sit well with me. I know it has to, if push came to shove, I might, you know, if.
One of the very few cities that doesn't have it.
Yeah. And, so, uh, just my hesitation, I think it's too restrictive. But on the other hand, I, I think in a point that it'll pass anyway, so I can get my objection in there to let the city council know where I stand, so, so that's kind of my point on there.
And I'm not disagreeing with what you're feeling, because I just want to understand.
Is there, is there anybody here who doesn't feel that this is too restrictive?
Well, I, I don't think what we're writing is too restrictive, I think what the state is.
It's requiring.
Yeah.
I, I think as far as.
We wouldn't even be doing this if we weren't for the state.
Yeah, I think as far as what we're doing as a city, it's because it's being handed down to us.
Is it more the timeline of the year? You want that, would you want it longer or no?
You like it not at all?
But, but once again, all we're doing is moving it forward to council. This isn't us saying this is our ordinance, this is what we're.
We're making our input on the ordinance and then forwarding it to them.
You know, and I, I'm, I struggle with the irrigation standard, saying you have to do this, and that, you know, those types of things, just that, those are what I, those are what I struggle with.
I think we should move it on to the city council, and, and I gotta tell you, to me, it's kind of crazy that, I would include all of us pretty much in lay, as laypeople when it comes to landscape and whatnot. I ran a, in our custom home building in Salt Lake City, I had a landscape crew for fifteen years, and yet I didn't know everything about landscape, to the point it was interesting, one of the last homes I landscaped was for Bryce Glover, the owner of Glover Nursery. And here I'd been landscaping all these homes that we were building for fifteen years, and he said, hey, all my plants and stuff will show up for your crew to put in, uh, tomorrow. And I said, well, we'll be ready, send the plan and we'll get them put where you want. And I show up there the next day and there's no trees. There's a lot of beautiful bushes, and I said, Bryce, hell, you're in the la, you're a lan, you're a nurseryman, where's all your trees? He said, Mike, unless, it, unless you're an idiot, you don't plant trees in your yard, they're for parks. Well, now I understand, now I understand, thirty-five years later, after I had landscaped my own home before I did his home, and I'm in the process of tearing a bunch of big ass dumb trees out, because they got too big. You see what I'm saying? We're lay, we need to just move it on and.
I want to make sure it's clear, because I, I said this a couple of weeks ago, but like the tree part, I put that in there. That, that's not a requirement from Central Utah. I felt like there was a need for our commercial property owners to understand some of the needs. This isn't just applying to, um, you know, residential, it, it's, it's providing direction to, for, you know, because we'll get people that want to fight with us on where they want to, they want to provide, you know, they want to plant a tree that's gonna grow forty feet tall in a park strip, and it's under what, under power lines or something. And so, this is, this is providing direction and design for a project, not.
And it sounds like there's plenty of resources if we just send people, even those people that do their own deal. This is a great resource that could, you know, the, uh, the district to give them some guidelines and some information. They're probably gonna tell them, hey, you might not want to plant an Austrian pine underneath the power lines, you know?
If you want to take the three to four inches of mulch out, that's, that's not a requirement from the, from Jordan, or from Central Utah or the state. That, you know, you, there's, there's things like that, I mean, I watered this, from the model ordinance they gave us, this is half of what they gave me.
Right, yeah. I, I think it looks, I think you've done a very good job on it, and our, and, and the city council is gonna work this over also. So, um, I, I think we ought to go ahead with a motion and, and see if that passes with those of us that are here.
What is the motion, just to move it forward?
A motion as far as a recommendation to, to the city council. Okay, Rob?
I move to recommend approval of ordinance amendment twenty twenty-three oh one as presented and with the changes recommended on, uh, time limitations for residential.
Commercial trees.
Commercial trees.
Where the fence is installed.
Yeah.
And adding multifamily. And adding multi-family.
Okay. Is there any others? I think that was the.
Those were the four.
Those is it. Okay. Um, with those changes.
Okay. I have a motion for approval. All in favor?
Second.
Oh, I, do I have a second?
Well, can, can we not say with recommendation, recommendations for the council's consideration or something, rather than?
I think we just decide, don't we just recommend approval to the city council? I don't think, I think that's how we have to do it.
See his point, though.
I, I do too, but I think we just, we make a recommendation and then they decide what they want to do with it.
Yeah, I mean, I personally would like to see, you know, it go to the city council and.
Right.
They've just, they have their job to say, "We don't like the recommenda, or the changes that the planning committee made."
Right.
Well, that's what they do.
So I don't, I, I know, and so I, so in other words, I don't have a problem supporting that motion, I just wondered if there's a way to say, "These are recommendations for your consideration", which is, again, what they do in.
So, so I'll highlight the different changes we've discussed in the staff report as well.
Right.
And it'll show up to them that way, won't it?
Yes, I, I highlight those in the bullet points.
These were the changes, or the recommendations that the planning commission made?
Yes.
That's good.
Okay.
That way they'll know that, that we pulled some things out of our hat.
Mm-hmm.
Us laypeople.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll second that motion that Rob made.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any opposed?
Nay. Just, just to be on record, that, I think that needs to be really closely looked at.
Okay, the motion carries.
I guess I'm just not, I've been out of shape about it, because I'm probably one of those ninety-five percent of the people who just can't do it, because I'm a pride of ownership kind of a guy, right?
But there are those that don't.
There are those that don't, and, and those same people are often those who put the landscaping in and let it die, or.
That's right.
It becomes a mess.
It really doesn't make a difference.
Always gonna be five percent of the people that just.
That's true. I know.
Yeah, I, I realize this doesn't apply to, apply to me, 'cause it's new construction or whatever, but, but it's like, my property, which I love my property, violates this fifteen different ways, you know?
And they know.
And they know that, I mean, so, so, I mean, so it's really, it's really a rub, you know, I, so it's, it's, it's a shame to say we can't even prevent somebody from having doing, having a nice yard or something in the future, but, but then again, there's other ways around it.
Where does public shaming come into all this? People that just don't get it, they don't have a clue, they just need to be shamed by their neighbors some way, and it's, that's a very strong incentive motivation.
Jared, Jared, it doesn't work.
I tried that, it doesn't work.
I was asked by the same lady at church for three and a half years when I was gonna put my lawn in.
It's the same ones that put their garbage next to the roll-off bins in the park.
But maybe she went out and picketed it for your front house, it might have had a bigger effect.
Change, I couldn't afford it.
We got one across the street from us. Okay, um, as far as planning commissioners, do you have anything that you would like to mention tonight, as far as other items?
Just a question, Mike, do you have a timeline on, I, I know, um, just like for Walker Farms, you had something, there's something coming from Wadley, do, do we have a timeline on when that's coming?
Me with Alan tomorrow, and, um, we may discuss, just as a kind of, not of, not as a work meeting, but just bring you some items, the different applications he has with the city, and one city proposed, uh, or one city application. I think I'll try and bring those next time. Maybe have him give his presentation of his overall plan and, and discuss his different applications, just as, as an information item, um, so we can kind of start working on this together.
Next time being like on the ninth or something?
Is the night?
Is it?
So we wouldn't really, that would just be a presentation, it would, we wouldn't be taking any action at that time.
Yeah. Right, I don't think we're ready for that yet. Um, he's still got some plans that need to be updated, probably like his civil plans that we're waiting on. Like he wants to turn the Red Barn into a, a retail, um, business.
Boutique.
Boutique, and.
I, he was, when I heard him, it was like a, a creamery.
Yeah, we're not quite ready with those plans yet, and I wanna bring everything at once, so I think next time will be more of an information item, um, and, and discussion, so.
Okay.
So, my, my question was, I've had a couple people ask, is there any plans where they've put in the meters on the secondary, they did it during the winter, they don't look very good, is there anything, is there in, could be any restoration of that, or is, or are they done?
It will be, yes.
Lawn.
So they'll come back and put?
Just lawn.
Well, if it's in a plant, or they'll.
Thought or whatever.
Or mulch or whatever, yeah.
Mulch, they'll make it look like it did before they.
So they'll come back and make it look, okay.
I think the city website talks about that.
Okay, I just had that asked.
The flyer that they handed out to all the residents indicates that also. Yeah, mine, mine is minimal.
They didn't affect, well, other than they tried to put in another one, they were gonna dig it up again, but we stopped them.
Yeah, you gotta get those passed. Um, the only thing I wondered is, you mentioned that, um, Tim Clyde had, um, filed a thing with the ombudsman, this land use ombudsman.
Yeah.
I, I thought this group might would be interested in that.
Yeah, we're just, um, Tim, uh, submitted a application with the property rights ombudsman's office, basically, uh, arguing that he shouldn't have to put in the site improvements, and so, we are, we're.
Who's this? This is defense?
Uh-huh.
Tim Clyde, yeah.
And so we're responding to that, to the property rights ombudsman's office, and so we'll let you know how that goes.
On whose office?
The property rights ombudsman, so.
The state?
It's a state agency.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You got it?
And he's, he's asking to have none of the improvements? Okay, just, let's clarify what he's asking for.
No, not, not any kind of fencing or anything.
He just wants to be able to use it to do whatever he wants.
Yeah.
So how are, how is the city responding to that?
Brian, Brian is putting together a response, a legal response, so the property rights ombudsman is, is a, is the, an agency that they can, um, give kind of non-binding legal interpretations, and they can help with mediation, and so, um, we're responding. We've done this before, when, when the Autumn Grove development went in, that was the one, they're on fifteen fifty west, it's where the chocolate places are, the, what do you call them, those truffles they make down there, they didn't want to pay the cost of connecting the road, um, there, they thought the city should pay for that, and so they went to the property rights ombudsman's office, um, we won on that, saying that it was, you know, that's a development responsibility to connect the road, and, and so. So we've been through this process before.
Right, and, and you feel like the city's pretty, on pretty solid ground on what we're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
You know, I, I, I wish we'd had it to just put in front of him that night, that was a great example, you came up with the day, next day, the treasury
Yeah.
development over there, which was exactly what.
Castle Park.
Castle Park.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and then you mentioned that you were, I know, just heard through the grapevines, that one of his big things is that, he's being singled out when there's other properties that should have to be cleaned up. And, and I would, I would guess you're taking steps on those properties also.
Hmm, we are.
Which, which ones are you working with, or can you tell us that?
I mean, we've got a whole list, our Jacob Hess, he's our code enforcement officer, he's got a whole spreadsheet of properties he's working on, so.
Oh, great.
Was that provided to him by Clyde?
No.
No, it was something we already had in the works?
I mean, we have lots of them in work, in the works, I, he's probably got fifty that he's working on, our, a, a big one we're working on right now is with Tony Cook and some things he's doing on his property, so.
Where's Tony Cook live?
Lakeview, well, it's a homie, but I don't.
The Cooks Greenhouse, it's.
No, no.
No.
It's right on Lakeview.
By Tony Cook and the greenhouse, it's the one that's, was Colomore's property.
I guess the neighbors are all wound up, and I hadn't heard anything about it, but the mayor called me over the weekend and told me what was going on down there.
Are you sure of that, that was or not, not in this meeting? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, I don't have anything else. Does anyone else?
So we just, um, we had, I emailed everybody, but we had a great general plan meeting, uh, last Thursday night, we had, uh, close to a hundred, if not over a hundred people, and um, I think the pull passes were the key to get people there, and so, um, it was great, it was great, um, we've had a lot of really good feedback between the feedback we had doing the website, um, the feedback the other night, the feedback we're expecting, um, still, we ha, we handed out a QR code there that night where they could go in and provide feedback, and so we're still waiting on some of that, um, but a lot, lot of, a lot of, uh, really good things came out of that meeting, a lot of comments on Lyndon Elementary, a lot of comments on when's my road gonna be repaved, um, but, you know, I think a lot of people were just happy to come look and see what the plans were, to talk to people from the city, um, I think, you know, just people were, we had a lot of people just thank us for holding the meeting, and so it was. I think, you know, as I, as I, I had the impression there that night, like, may, we probably should maybe do something like that once a year or more to, you know, let people know what's going on, so I thought, thought it was good, um.
I thought you were doing, I came just to see what you'd done, and I thought, I thought you were doing a really good job.
Yeah, next time I, I, it was a lot for Mary and I, it was a little overwhelming, and so, I think next time I would have invited, like, the city engineer, the public works director, I would have invited more city staff to be there.
So you had more staff there with you?
So.
Can't remember what I had going, but I couldn't be there.
This, next planning commission meeting could be fairly busy, we've got, um, again, we may discuss Wadley Farms, um, ICO development is, um, ramping up for their multi-family phase, and so that, um, may come to you at the next meeting.
Where, where's that phase?
Anderson Farms.
That one, yeah, yep, Anderson Farms, um, some plat amendments, some non, uh, non-conforming use determination for, uh, a resident, um, so there, there's quite a few things that may be coming to you the next, uh, meeting or the next few meetings, so.
Well, thank you for.
Thank you for the good job you did.
Yeah, thank you so much, and, and I know this, um, ordinance that we were discussing was a difficult one to put together. I appreciate all your work on it.
Thank you.
And, and I am sure that you will get more feedback from the city council too, so, but thank you, I, I think you did a really good job on it. And on the general plan, too, that was a, that was a gigantic undertaking.
Yeah, that's been a, Mary's done a ton of work on that.
Both of you, I know, both of you.
And Lisa, like, we couldn't have done that without a consultant, it was, I really appreciate the city council funding that, and.
Well, it'll come back here one more time.
No, Mary is, Mary is right in there working with Mike on everything, and I appreciate you.
We'll have. Yeah, we haven't held any of the public hearings on it yet, and so we'll be noticing that for public hearings, we're thinking the second meeting in May to bring that to city council, or to planning commission, and so, um, and, again, we want you to thoroughly go through that, we'll send that to you way before, we'll send that, try send that, you know, at least two to three weeks before, so you can go through it. It's on, the, the draft of it is on the website now, if you, if you wanna go through it, um, for those people, to, to try and help answer a lot of questions, those property owners who are, were looking at changing the future land use map on their property, we're sending notices out hopefully tomorrow, and so we wanna meet with all them beforehand, or give them the option of meeting with us, explaining what's, what happened, so that you don't get, you know, a hundred people showing up here wondering why you're changing the future land use map, and so we're gonna start me, giving residency op, or not residents, it's mostly business owner, business properties, uh, the option to meet with us, um, and answer their questions.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks to all of you.
And I'm gonna run, one of my sons.